Well, I'm Andrew, Paulus. Our little conference with a young man asking about the NIDS. And where my talk, in my talk like say, the NIDS was a, if him, a film idea. This is new identity. The only thing I'm saying which was true that the new identification system was introduced to them from 1970, which, which, that we are pushed that, what we were pushing, right? That the new ID system was from 1970. Now, they're going to do everything in their power to push the so-called white man agenda, which was the same thing for the Jews, but in the land that I do. Them do everything to push the enemy's agenda. Everything, and a part of the agenda was to what? Destroy the Lord and save your Yahoshai. So I'm trying to chop him up and, and get him in a, um, to do some unlawful things. But guess what? Your Yahoshai was always ten step ahead of them. Because it is written that Yahoshai know whether the hearts of men. And for the most part, whether the hearts of men is wickedness. And Yahoshai is that light as the weather are going up. So the light already show them up, shoot the darkness already. Right, continue now?
Verse forty-nine. And one of them named Ayaphas, being the high priest that came here to say unto them, "He know nothing at all, nor consider that it is expedient for us that one man should die for the people and that the whole nation perish not."
Hey, and Ayaphas, Ayaphas knew of the prophecy. So Ayaphas prophesied. But even though it was, it is expedient, or it was expedient that Yahoshai die for us. See? There's a remnant when he die for, that, that, that precious grape, when the last time with great labor have I made it, um, it perfect. Find Isaiah sixty-five, from the, ah, my question. Because see, Yahoshai died. See? And, yes, him, him give us grace and him give us a time to, to come back to him, um, his words. But at the, but at the same time, the death of Yahoshai are, are boiling in my heart each and every day. So he must come back and he must come destroy a lot of your people. And you Jacob, you refuse from returning back to his ways. The Lord have come with vengeance and fury.
Right, matter of fact, this, um, I understand about, I understand about Jacob. Remember, back then, when he might get crucified, you know what Jacob said? Make him blood be upon us, yo.
Exactly.
He never go, don't go.
About Jacob?
Yeah.
It is you. Because, wait, 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 it is written that what? The Lord visit the iniquity of the fathers, whatever, return on the fourth generation. Which is you coming back in the reincarnation. Because the Lord judgment is like on to a ring. It, it, as, as a matter of fact, hold on. Give me, um, Ezekiel, chapter eighteen, verse one. Um, Ashar. Ezekiel, chapter eighteen, verse one, from my question. And then we jump to the priest again.
Ezekiel, chapter eighteen, verse one. "And the word of the Lord came unto me, saying, 'What meant he that he used this proverb concerning the land of Israel? Say, the fathers are eating sour grapes, sour grapes, and the children, teeth are set on edge.'"
Yeah, so say, in any words, why, who, who, who four parents do bad and a weed, a weed that catch? And that, that's how Jacob view it. Say, oh, and a weed, well, our, our four parents. But this is what the Lord said to Ezekiel, go ahead.
"As I live," said the Lord power, "he shall not have occasion anymore to use this proverb in Israel. Behold, all souls are mine, as the soul of the father, so also the soul of the son in mine."
Go ahead.
"The soul that sinned, it shall die."
Right, so the soul that sinned, it shall die. So when you come back in the reincarnation, in a, in a regeneration, and you face the punishment, it was from back then. So when the brother made mention though, when Jacob say when he was crucified, the Lord has saved your Yahoshai. They say, oh, let his blood be upon us. See? On our children, it is actually you. See? The same generation, when, when, when they know the willingness, when, whenever they listen to Moses. See? And Yahoshai tell them, say, when they, when they go match the chapter nineteen, when they say, um, why Moses write that, uh, tell a writer be like divorce man? Yahoshai say, because of the hardness of your heart. So yet the Lord Yahoshai tell them, say, you, you're the same people where they did back then. Walking Moses hard the hard time. So you're the same people who come back now. And guess what? You're the same people who exist today. See? The same, this, this generation which, which will never enter to the Lord's rest, saving the elect.
Must just like the book saying, you know, the book of Jesus, the book of that, they.
Yeah.
You know, saying the blood, the blood because the blood they pay your head, yo.
Exactly.
I don't not care if you're not Jesus. You understand what I'm saying?
What's it? Go ahead.
Verse ninety. "Yet say he, why, do, do it not the son bear the iniquity of the father? When the son hath done which is lawful and right, and hath kept all my statutes, and hath done them, he shall surely live; though the soul that sinned it, it shall die. The son shall not bear the iniquity of the father, neither shall the father bear the iniquity of the son. The righteousness of the righteous shall be upon him, and the wickedness of the wicked shall be upon him."
Exactly. So, so, what you gave us, what, what's all a man saw it? That shall also reap. See? And you, you people still so iniquity? Well, all of us so iniquity. But the Lord basically have mercy upon a, a small remnant. And this is this remnant, uh, this remnant that we speaking about, that they are the ones that Yahoshai send this message across to. And they are scattered in all nations, uh, in, in the four corners of the earth. Oh, come here, what I, I said, I say, oh, um, say the organization big. We call them, they're, they're, all right, correct. Say, him going over the United States, them go arriba, and you see men like we do this, my same, they want to source a big. See? So, so, this, this is a testimony against your people, show that, look, this is about to come to, um, to an end. The soc- the society is about to come to an end. And the, and the kingdom is being in building. See, okay, okay, as it's becoming, the brother I mentioned about prophecies. Prophecies, like we were saying, that, that, um, it's in full force and in full effect, so by others say. Where's the word prophecies, the mother of full faith? Rapid and, rapid succession. Succession. See? Now we see the prophecies that take place. And guess what? Every time we hear about one ex-fast flag, fast flag, one terrorist attack or something where it take place, the US and ex-terrorist get waking up, or one ex-cana or something happen. Because he's a push, film agenda. And by pushing his agenda, the Lord basically have have pushed his agenda as well. Just like you know the acts of your pastors, every time something happen, you have five, five thousand man rise up, three thousand man rise up. See? Each time things happen, and it's the same thing where it take place. No, um, Isaiah sixty-five, my question. See?
He said, me, my, my number, you do this one.
Uh, no, 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 bump, bump, when the, see, just start at one. Just start at one. Whole chapter is go.
Isaiah, chapter sixty-five, verse one. "I am sought of them that asked not for me; I am found of them that sought me not."
You see why the light therefore come to Jerusalem? Because you have some men back then, the circle of the circumcision, who basically say, uh, them are keep the law, them safe. And that's when they feel like they're the more, them, them, they feel like them the more, more than I know. You get what I'm saying? But the light, which is Yahoshai, the word of Yahoshai, came in and it show them up. It show up who is really with the word of the Lord and who is really for the Lord. See? When they see their pastors, the way I say, are these unlearned and ignorant men? Because they've looked down upon them in society, as people look down upon us in this society. So it's just a recurrence of, of prophecy, playing all over again.
Same words they were.
And the same, the same words again. Exactly. Hey, just let's just say the spirit of the prophets, it's subject to the prophets. It's, it's, hey, we, we don't need, we don't need it to be written down that the spirit of the scuffers, be subject to the scuffers. Why, why does spirit work with you? You can understand perfectly that, look, if you, if you was a scapper back then, you was a scum, no. If you was a man that don't give a fuck back then, you ever come back and don't give a fuck. You can come back right, and you won't like. See? Everybody sleep and come back in the middle like Daniel. They don't even say to, to the apostles, John. So look, yeah, I'm gonna sleep and I'm gonna prophesy again. See? So until John died, I'm prophesy again. See? So you have to be, you have to be in the spirit, you understand this book? Because this book is a spiritual book. See, go ahead, huh?
"I said, behold, behold me, behold me, unto the nation that was not called by my name."
Who is that nation? No, oh, that's, that's the Gentiles. Yeah? That, that's talking about the other nations, eh? See? No. That is speaking about Israelites, Israelites foreigner. When you come back in history, you should see that Israel is scattered among all nations. And a chief point in history, or a key point in history, was in the time of the Greek Empire, with King Antiochus, if people in the world, which basically passed a decree that all people should be what? One, and that Israel they have left them law. And it's good to tell you that many of the Israelites do what? Leave and can't say to them, um, doctrine, for them believe. Just like, like, for example, the, the so-called Jamaicans out here. When they go in the state, they have children. The children, they may really have no former roots. Back to the side here, especially Grant. They more of the, they more of the American or westernized, of class, in the western world, the western custom. Right? They, they, exactly. Never mind, this right way. See? So it's the same thing that could do about then. Go ahead, huh?
Verse two. "I have spread out my hands all the day unto rebellious people, which walketh in a way that was not good."
And I know of proof that. The Lord Yahaw, the, the God of heaven and earth, sent food his right hand down here to die for, for his people, the elect, chief. And Yahoshai, what earth, teaching? Yeah, if you ever said to things, um, fox have, have holes, and the birds have, they haven't have nest, for the son of, for the, what? Nowhere to lay his, uh, to, to lay his head. We show that his mind was, was just set and teaching the word of, of, of his father. When he said to the, to, um, is this apostle? When this apostle says?
Anybody giving meat?
He said, my meat is to what? The will of my father. So the Lord basically came with us, like, like a arse it with blinds. He only see one part, one direction, which is to teach this truth to, to wake up his elect. Exactly.
Just remember my father's business.
Exactly. Exactly, you said the mother, as I say. You know, still come up my father's business, maybe like, what? A wonderful jacket thing, yeah? Matter of, see? Go ahead, huh?
After your own thoughts, a people that who, that provoke me to anger continually to my face, that sacrifice it in gardens and burning incense.
Like the churches, eh, go ahead.
Upon altars of brick.
Nigga, right now, right now, you have EJ, you have No Class Cullen. See? Jesus is a nerd. Um, G-Man, I have, uh, all in front of a Christian, um, people who come up, I try profess to them know the Bible, which all them do is just run. Kind of, you know, fierce it. None of you know the scriptures. None of you know the scriptures in your thought. Hey, when, when you get there some, some deep matters of the scriptures and ask you, even some simple matters, shuffle on it. Like, uh, like in Hebrews, when, when the scripture say, um, Yahoshai die for him sins, uh, and for the sins of the people. Like, you know, the high priest have make your sacrifice for himself and for, for the people. But he said that Yahoshai did when him die for himself, uh, for him sin and for the, sin of the people. And I seen that you don't believe in the reincarnation, how do you, how you explain scriptures like that? How do you explain scriptures like that? Yeah, when, when Yahoshai sin, we show that it's, that the word of the Lord is that, is that with you in your thought. The spirit of truth then dealing with you. The spirit of truth is with the men of greatness who are starting from their apostles and all that. And so, and everybody will teach, what, what their apostles, um, taught us. We are the ones of truth. And that's the reason why up until this year, um, December the twenty-second of two thousand and seventeen, we cannot be confounded. And, and over the years, it has been proven, because guess what? The prophecy of the mark of the beast, which is the RFI the microchip, we're laughed at and scarred at by, um, by evil, other Israelite groups. But guess what? We are there now. Like, you know, during television, CSM TV, Jay, we are there now. Some man from back in the, wait, we are there now. Oh, we not seen, we not seen later come back then. It's you! Ain't no microchips. It's you! We, we not seen nobody come up. We, we not seen, um, Balu who put them up, put the chips on him, eh? See? Because guess what? It is been made, a manifest, are been proven more and more each day. That, look, all of y'all fast prophets, man. And the most of Yahoshai, Yahoshai deal with you. And if you don't repent, the Lord will put your asses to dead. Just say the Lord. See? Come on, can I speak out, my question?
Isaiah, chapter sixty-five, verse four. "Which remain among graves and lodges in the monuments, which eat swine's flesh and broth of abominable things..." "...in their vessels."
Like, 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 like that, eh? At, at Texas camp, the brother, um, yeah, from, uh, Arizona, them, uh, uh, speak about, um, deduction. I have seen this is a nerd and it's black nigger. I tried justify some can eat pork. We, we speak on, uh, a bit of. I, I tried justify himself, some can eat pork. See? We hear the scripture, I cut it, that brat of heart, abominable thing in your flesh, like the fucking swine we eat. Which, wait, wait, eh, the most I tell you, we destroy him temple, my god, what? Destroy him. And you, and you are the temple of God. And, and if you do anything for research, van these unclean, um, um, things, it destroys, harmful to your body. All the most I do is that, give you a better way of living. Life, the Lord, the Lord present life before your eyes. That's all him do. See?
Yeah, there's a reason why we have a doubt in the scripture. And like, the, the Lord don't waste his time, if you have to, who they looking at the scripture so we can have it teaching?
And they say, pray for, pray for them.
They don't mean to say.
If God sit down, he decide, he decide, say, oh, pray for this, because we pray for this, it's all become. No. Lord, you're on the mat. Lord ain't stupid like you people. See? Go ahead.
Verse five. "Which say, 'Stand by thyself; come not near to me, for I am older than thou.'"
And I know that you niggas feel like you more righteous than us. See, and when, when we come to you people, come, in, in, in a loneliness of mind, scripture say, let your, your speech always be with grace. Seize with salt that you would owe to everyone, and to every man. See, because you know what? You don't want, you, you, you don't want broke like you're perfect. You don't want come out and say, can't call the most, say, yo, plate or yoker. See? You, you want go, that's a look here. The Lord made me Yahoshai, Yahoshai, and we are seek mercy from him because he born. All of us sin and come short of the glory of the most high. We don't want go, oh, oh, oh. Where's the beer? Where's the beer? But at the same time, we have some sharp line up. See? There was like, and that example is to say. Go ahead, huh?
You can say this. This priest have also cut the people who think that, uh, the, the, the word is about competition between demonization.
Exactly, yeah, cut.
You understand? Some people think that the villainous demonization, they more holy, a better, uh, than another demon.
Bro, if you like, I met another one who go church on Sundays.
The demonization. Yes, yes, this child of the devil.
Okay, but guess what? They are demon nations. All of you, whether you're Methodist, Baptist, Catholic, Adventist, or whatever you're saying this. All of you are, all of you are demon nations. Because guess what? There's no way the scriptures, that the most I tell us, possibly, are confronts and are Christians, who in their plantation Christianity. The, the Christians in, in the book of Acts were Israelites.
"These are a smoke in my nose, a fire that burned it all the day. Behold, it is written before me, I will not keep silence, but will recompense, even recompense into their bosom. Your iniquities and the iniquities of your fathers together, say the Lord, which have burned incense upon the mountains and blasphemed me upon the hills. Therefore will I measure their former work into their bosom. Thus said the Lord, as the new one is found in the cluster, and one said, 'Destroy it not, for a blessing is in it; so will I do for my servant's sake.'"
You know, you know what I'm saying? Yahoshai. Yahoshai is immediate between us and the most high. But basically, yeah, appease the wrath of the most high. I beg the pardon, cool on. We have, we have, uh, 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 a, 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 a small remnant that actually believe in us. So it, they beg you not to destroy it. Understand? And that's the reason why we are here today, prophesying of the return of our Lord and Savior, Yahoshai. Go ahead.
"So will I do for my servant's sake, that I may not destroy them all. And I will bring, and I will bring forth a seed out of Jacob and out of Judah, and in, and inheritor of my mountain.
Right?
And my elect shall inherit."
And who is what? His elect.
Shall inherit.
Where, where the Christians fall in that? Because if you go Isaiah for the Bible, it tell you that, right? For Jacob, my servant's sake, and Israel, my elect. So if, so if you come from the Greek, it correct us. So if you go in magical fore, when the Lord say, my angel, the angel is what? Elect from the four corners of the earth, what he elect? The Israelites. The chosen of the most high, the Israel of God. Who are chosen.
You are elected. You are elected.
See, you want to say, I have the spirit, you understand this book? You give out, line up and line. With all praise, eh, here a little, and there a little. Because it is like an elephant navel. See? And, and when I speak like, we get this, uh, we are free. One, the other is free. And us come back and say, oh, where is it now? Is it spirit of the Lord? Just as all the lights, eh, uh, Peter say, who is this? Say, oh, you're the son of the most high, Yahaw. So flesh I'm gonna reveal at you, oh, father. See? Go ahead.
"And my servant shall dwell here, verse ten. And Sharon shall be, shall be a fold, a block, and the, and the valley of, and the valley of, of earth, a place for the earth to lie down in, for my people that have sought me. But ye are there that forsake the Lord, that forget my holy mountain, that prepare a table for that truth, and that furnish the drink, the drink offering unto the no, unto that number. Therefore will I number you to the sword."
Right, so because you're wicked, the Lord say, man, number you on the sword, which, which have been going into that, um, the past couple of weeks. Or the Lord basically have got number you people to the sword. Like with this, um, this blockchain technology and, um, having a, a AI, a supercomputer, to basically number all of you and can't keep a record. So today's basically delete you. Like, um, Jade help. With Jade is a software, but basically give command to the sword, just them what to do. So that, that is a part of how the Lord basically have got number you to the sword. And as a matter of fact, all of you are numbered already. See? Because the Lord basically number, um, Israel and say what? Him say, I am deliver a third out of the land of America. But the two, but the two thirds are, are gonna be burnt up. That is what the scripture said. See, as a matter of fact, I can't find it from my, my question. See, that, that are the perfect number. And don't, and don't believe, so think that the Lord don't know who is his elect.
I've chosen.
Or is chosen, exactly. Hey, when you go, um, March the thirteenth, when the, when the, when the food, when the, when, um, the husband man saw the seed, the wicked one, where the wicked ones go up on them? Them say, the plant, some, some wheat, some, some tears beside the wheat. And what the Lord said? Let them grow together until the time of harvest. Because the Lord know exactly the difference between the wheat and, 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 um, the tear. The Lord knows it. But it's exactly. See? Because the angels are gonna be the one, gonna reap the wheat and leave the tear to what? To be buried in a trench of fire.
Right, um, Yahoshai, you know, walk the earth and him, you see this side for him? You ever ask me a question, I say, yo?
Exactly.
Only for you.
Exactly. But, 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 um, John. John asks, are, are you the man, uh, 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 sent from prison? We ask him, uh, Yahoshai, the one we're gonna look for. See? And he said, instead of ask, but Yahoshai never need to ask, because he know the spirit. That's why when you go March the chapter eleven, and he must speak about John. What I'm saying? Him say, if you can receive it, this is Elias, which was to come, and it be blow of him disciples, I mean, and where them, um, matter what, chapter seventeen, or nineteen, I think, them get it. When, when he say, um, um, Elijah come already, and them do, uh, certain wickedness to him. Him said, then understand there that he's faker fool. John the Baptist. See? Hey, hey, y'all praise the Yahoshai, Yahoshai, go ahead, brother.
Zechariah, chapter thirteen, verse eight. "And it shall come to pass, that in all the land, say the Lord, two parts therein shall be cut off and die."
Right, so which land this is speaking about in America? Mystery Babylon, the great, spiritually known as what? Saddam and Egypt. Right? So the Lord say, in all that land, two parts therein shall be cut off and die. So the Lord have killed two third, and people in, in, in the Americas. Go ahead.
"But the third shall be left therein."
Right, but you're gonna leave a small remnant, a third. In all that land. Go ahead.
Verse nine. "And I will bring the third part to the fire."
This is a fire. This is a fire. But the Lord have bring the third in a joke. And if you feel like a liar, go back and check the book of Daniel. When, um, the king of Babylon, he took the fire for put, um, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, which are Babylonian names, in that fire. And guess what? The angel of the Lord was what? With them. And deliver them through that fire. The fire had no effect on them. And it's the same way that the elect, that third, have a pass through the fire, and now gonna get burned like Sierra kind of. Because the angel of the Lord have been there to read them through that fire. That is the baptism, where the Lord have baptized them with. He shall baptize you with the Holy Spirit and with what? Fire. In, in the book of Job, it say, you're gonna get delivered by the skin of your teeth. See? You can, hey, you, you may be all doubt, when you forget beaver. We show how drastic, the, the salvation and the deliverance of Israel have been. And that day, when the Lord make him return. See? Go ahead, huh?
Verse nine. "And I will bring the third part to the fire, and will refine them as silver is refined, and I will dry them as gold is dried."
Right, so what, what, what makes gold more perfect? What makes silver more perfect? Fire. What are gonna make, what, what can make you more perfect? Fire. Starting with trippelation. Fire is the, um, best cleaning agent ever, if you feel like a liar. If you feel like a liar, burn a piece of that. And you can remove the ash from off, now see how the land look clean. See? Anything, you use fire and cleanse it. Anything. See? So the Lord basically have purified his elect with fire. Go ahead, huh?
"And I will dry them as gold is dried. They shall call on, on my name, and I will hear them. I will say, 'It is my people.' And they shall say, 'The Lord is my power.'"
The point, the point important, he says. He shall call upon his name, yeah? And if I hear them.
Which name?
Name, yeah.
Exactly. Exactly.
I have been on the scene, and you don't know the name of the Lord.
Am I, am I, am I, they say, name is the Lord, I got?
Yeah. Know what I mean? yeah I mean so he say I'll call upon his name I'mma hear I'm I'm I'mma hear
he say this is my people but what him say
that the God
third man
see the Lord's name Jesus by the way everybody know that you know I mean see that's why telling in the book of Psalms that um the name is a mystery man you know I mean so hey hungry the third I'll call upon a given truth
exactly yeah yeah cause probably they say he also said that everyone that name the name of their ninety do it apart from iniquity so if you know the name use it as as a as a mental the name tell you finish with the um Psalms ninety one on the last third verse I think the last Psalm three verse I think Psalms ninety one beautiful chapter cause hey Psalms ninety one as a matter of fact the whole chapter see cause and and to the point over that one the deliverance of Israel with Psalms ninety one is not about the neighbor next door where where the feast are over there you just speak about the deliverance of the um the elect of of Israel so we are we are going out and we are breaking down
yeah can you like us don't you like using it
exactly they love reading Psalms ninety one okay and if anything if you're supposed to check out the scripture and say okay what is a what is a talk about you don't what is a talk about you don't know Psalm they they love course Psalm thirty three the Lord first she pray that shall not want they get me down to line in green pastures what is the green pasture cause growing up as a young man messing off pretty hillside full of green grass you understand that was the thing go on pretty hillside with a green hey like um
full of all the
exactly because hey just echo of Jacob your child when 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 um the man the men are cutting land when when stab himself I want that part up to flip down and it could work we feel like a pretty smooth you know them you know them grass on them show up on TV they can roll in it and nothing wrong with you you know I talk about that see to talk about the word see go ahead Psalms ninety one
Psalms chapter ninety one verse one either dwelt in the secret place of the most eye shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty
where is the secret give me um Amos um you know what John more right Amos see what is the secret of the Lord
secret place
yeah where's the secret place of the Lord what is the shadow of the Almighty see Psalm uh Amos six and three or three and six Amos two and seven
Amos chapter three verse seven surely the Lord Yahweh will do nothing but he revealed his secret unto his servants the prophets
okay so the Lord reveal his secrets unto his servants the prophets which is his word so the secret place of the most is what his word and to abide in the shadows what what besides UFOs this so-called UFOs the chariots of the most I scripture tell us that this are the wheels of God this is what the Lord fly upon see this throne of the most I chariots see go ahead
Psalms chapter ninety one verse two I will say of the Lord he is my refuge and my fortress my power in him will I trust
right because right now right now because our eyes are open to what is really taking place you know surrounded oh evil time is I would see the trap where the elites basically um are put around our necks and when when we as we were speaking about it last week we try we basically we spirit try every other option how we all get delivered we think about it currently say oh we have go get arms go get food before run away and when we look into it we say there is no help but the help of the Lord there's no other help the it's the Lord the the Lord yeah exactly the Lord say who shall deliver out of mine hand
that's right
nobody can be delivered out of hand see because the Lord is that puppet master and we are his puppets you understand and as a verse of the Lord eyes is what ten thousand times brighter than the sun so the Lord see it all and the Lord know it all so and so to help to to be delivered from this hell it just mean we have no friendship with the power of high Yahweh shai my name right go ahead
verse three surely he shall deliver thee from the sneer of the fowler
what the word sneer mean
trap
the word sneer mean trap the sneer of the fowler disturbing all his legislation from all them web
these are the fowlers man these are the men who taking the trap you know I mean and why a trap basically is saying yeah
yes
um which basically you're gonna lead into the mark of the beast because the mark of the beast basically is that web or that sneer or that trap or the elite statement that them can as well as they quantify everything that's right you know I mean so that's the trap these are the fowlers man so when the Psalms mention you get delivered from the hand of the fowlers these are the men who laying that trap man want
no it's lucky verse three surely he shall deliver thee from the sneer of the fowler and from the ni the ni some pestilence verse four he shall
he's gonna bring the pestilence man
ni some
ni some pestilence ICBM missiles rare war tree thermonuclear war thermonuclear destruction man this is what the Lord is gonna deliver you from you know which trumpet is this right up seven trumpet man you know I mean when this go off in the earth see that's it man go on brother
he shall cover thee with his feathers
he shall cover thee with his feathers this is what the Lord gonna deliver people man the angels are basically I go about and pick up everybody who not supposed to die in this war man everybody we are wait for them here now twenty-five minutes what them all take for reach from this side of the world man twenty-five minutes before them here reach when them fire and the angel them all go and pick up everybody who's supposed to get picked up and everybody were left up supposed to get burned man
because they let the boys be burnt
right
the child the child who's supposed to get burnt
it's a purging instrument in that
he shall cover thee with his feathers and under his wings shall thou trust his his truth shall be thy shield and buckler
right so the truth shall be the shield and the buckler go ahead however people shy away from on scripture really that they went because the stickman will come with it man you know I mean oh people are gonna hate you people are gonna you know cut you off of the company ridicule you so enough man compromising to come out of the truth man oh my girlfriend have left me you know I mean see but the scripture say what the truth gonna be what
shield and buckler
it's gonna be a shield man see the fact that they come out and they speak the truth according to the scriptures
and that's telling
and yeah that's the reason why the Lord have got deliver you man they stand firm with his word you know I mean
that's that firm the popcorn words
you know I mean you have enough money to represent a popcorn and a chapada you know all that yeah we are stand firm for this in the second verse it does look um cool he say um when Israel said men that Yahweh put on um clothes upon them and they ask the angel who are these what did the angels say the men are stood stiffly for the name of Yahweh shai the men and somebody might tell you get beheaded
right
for the name of Yahweh shai see they can't learn that you are created so good they making mock the radio and the most I have put you to death
verse verse four he shall cover thee with his feathers and under his wings shall thou trust his truth shall be thy shield and buckler thou shall not be afraid for the terror by night
right
nor for
terror
nor for the arrow that flyeth
hey because because why next to them for them here man arrows man broken arrow these are the arrows man arrows are the tail of fireman according to the scripture yeah see so this is what the scripture making refer reference to the arrows that are shooting from them silos in the last days man between this war between America and Russia hey even China
the EU
North Korea
the EU
yeah
America as well
that's right yeah it's America and the reason are united nation you know everybody know really
I know I hear
you know I mean see hey because you know set the stage for the war man that's what take place eh when all them nations are gonna turn against America yeah that the Lord can get the prophecies fulfilled man see hey and hopefully on next year you know I mean hopefully you know I mean because hey how long how long you know I mean how long we are we are got out here witness all that that something here we want take place now you know
and nothing happen
see how long you have a day here if you see a youth them if you go and go to school where them can't teach them now say look you know you know say can be any sex where you want be tell the little boy say he can be a girl and them think that how long we have a day in something like this
where the last thing you what what your feet are um right so what these things they are men general witness what are 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 who say are examples